President. President Counsel Kehl, President Counsel Capano, President Counsel Clucci, President Counsel Crichton, President Counsel Seale, President Counsel Ford, President Counsel Ozzie, President Counsel Net, President Counsel Phelan, President Counsel Trahan, President Eleven present.
We all please rise from the chair. I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. The first item we have on the agenda is a presentation from ROKA, Counselor Crichton.
President, good to you, to the members. It's my honor to introduce a number of folks from ROKA here tonight. They've been the parents earlier this year in front of the public safety committee. I know every counselor, including Chairman Mosey Barker, are present, and I'm very interested in ROKA's role coming to Lynn. So they're just going to talk a little bit about their mission, as well as the pay for success program that the state is running, just cooperating on this in to Lynn. So please ask them a couple, say a few words of your presentation, and then we'll have a question and answer turn around. Thank you.
Counsel President Phelan, Counselor Crichton, Counselor Barton, and our other city council, thanks for having us here, pleased to be here. We're excited to tell you a bit about ROKA first, and then about the project that will ultimately bring us into serving young men from Lynn. We've had the great privilege of working both with Counselor Crichton and Counselor Barton. They've sort of helped us come here and meet a bunch of people within the community, and we've had the opportunity to also meet them within the police department. They've been very helpful. But high level, I'm going to introduce you to some of my colleagues, which are here with me tonight. Molly Baldwin is the founder and CEO of ROKA. Jay Jacobs is Director of Business Development, and Dan Pastin Telly is Project Administrator for the Social Innovation Financing Project, which will be serving young men from Lynn. I should also add that Dan was, for 16 years, the Chief Probation Officer here in Lynn. So he's very familiar with the community and is excited to continue working here. ROKA started in 1988 with a very simple mission of reducing violence in teen pregnancy in Chelsea. Over the years, it grew to a much larger size, sort of morphed in its size and mission, and started serving basically everybody under the sun in Chelsea, and then eventually it's Boston Revere. As time went on, through Molly's leadership, we realized as an institution that our greatest impact would be with the highest-risk young men. These are the men involved in gangs, involved in drugs, cyclically incarcerated, causing the most trouble in the community and ultimately costing the Commonwealth the most money and costing the community in terms of public safety. We developed over time in figuring out how to serve these young men. We needed to have a very robust, very deliberate intervention model that was very driven by particular outcomes. In order to do that, we created a model that both dealt in extensive street outreach, literally finding these kids wherever they are, getting references from the police departments, from the probation, from judges, from cops in the streets, finding them where they are, hanging out, whether it be at their houses, in the projects, in the drug spots, selling drugs, playing basketball, wherever they may be. Bringing them into programming. The programming is designed ultimately to, A, help them change their behavior in the long run to gain skills. As you know, the most important thing in a person's life in order to succeed is to be able to sustain long-term employment. So all the programming that we have, some in education, that we have some in life skills, we have a lot of pre-locational training, and, most importantly, transitional employment, which readies these young men to enter the workforce. And it readies the young men to enter the workforce into places where most of them can actually find a job. Because most of the young men that we deal with have criminal records and have had many run-ins with the law, there's a barrier to entrance for most of them. So we target our pre-locational training, we target our transitional employment into fields where there's already access for jobs, and the jobs continue to grow. So that would be maintenance, construction, hospitality, culinary, and we're doing quite well. Importantly, however, throughout this whole process where we're bringing a young person from point A, in which they're totally unready to enter the workforce, to point B, where they're fit and ready to work and can show up on time and be there and do a good job, we understand that there are lots of outcomes that need to be met. They need to show critical behavior changes, they need to show that they can show up on time, show up at work, not mess around, not get kicked out. We track data on every aspect of our intervention with these young people from the time of engagement to the time they get a job and after the fact. Now, tracking that data and doing a good job really has set us up to look for two major long-term outcomes. That has to do with get them to avoid being incarcerated again, because that would create only further incarceration to themselves, trouble for the community further down when they get out and have nothing to go to, and get them into long-term employment, which will indeed prevent further incarceration. Our good work in this area basically allowed us to run into what has now become Social Innovation Financing Project, and allowed us to position ourselves to get chosen through a procurement process for this project. High level, without getting into the complicated sort of econometrics of it all, Social Innovation Financing works as such. The state looks for an area of government that is really producing bad outcomes, both fiscal and social. They look to a private service provider that can get better outcomes for the state. But the state doesn't pay for the services provided, it only pays for the outcomes achieved. So therefore, it relieves the state of having to pay for services upfront and not knowing what they're going to get in the long run. You might ask, how do you pay for the services then? So basically, a private intermediary goes and raises capital for the project, combination of, A, commercial debt, B, philanthropic money, C, maybe some larger grants from corporations or what have you. They raise the money, they pay for the services, and as the outcomes are hit, the money spent on the services gets reimbursed by the state before those outcomes are achieved, and nothing more, nothing less. So our job with the state, as we were chosen, is to keep these young men out of jail and get them into long-term jobs. Now, we've been privileged enough to be in a position that ROKA is now going to scale up its operations to serve young men who are aging out of departmental services, aging out of juvenile probation, and who are on adult probation, young men, 17 to 24 years old, that's our target population. And so we will ultimately be paid only for the outcomes we can achieve for those young men by keeping them out of jail and getting them into jobs. As we scale up right now, as ROKA exists, we're in the communities of Chelsea, East Boston, Revere, Malden, Everett, and we've replicated the setup in Springfield about four years ago. In earnest, we've been doing the full, robust intervention model for about three years. We will be serving young men in a whole number of communities, including Lynn, which has a very large juvenile probation and juvenile DYSA jail population. So through the project, we're going to be taking on case loads of assigned young people that will come through the court system to us, the juvenile court system aging out of it to us. The state will tell us who we can work with, and our job is to keep them out of trouble. And our job at the end of the day is to make sure they get in those jobs and to make sure they don't go back to jail. So that's the broad scheme. I'm going to allow my colleagues to expand on it a little bit and just introduce themselves for you guys to get to know. And at the end, I think you can ask, I think Molly would be most fit to ask questions if you have a part in the project, because she knows way more than I do. So, but thank you for your time, and I'll let my colleagues introduce themselves and start over again.
Hey, thank you for the opportunity to present here today. I'm a retired chief probation officer. I worked in the Essex County Juvenile Court for 16 years, and prior to that, I was in Suffolk County for 25 years. I worked right across the street in the building of the juvenile court. I've been with ROKA since January of this year, and I want to honestly say, without any reservation, the model that John alluded to is one of the most intensive models that I have seen as a service provider in my career in probation. We have a model that works with these young men. It's a four-year model. I can tell you that I, as the chief probation officer, would routinely have people come into the court and ask for referrals for their programs. The programs never have the data and the success rate that ROKA has with our intervention model. Many of these models were 14, 15, 16 weeks, two or three days a week, with no results, no data to prove how effective they were. This model has proven that it works. We keep young men, higher-risk young men, out of jail. And for that alone, I'm honored to be part of this program. And I'm now on the other side of the table, and it's somewhat difficult for me to kind of relate to people who try to do what we're doing and are not as successful. ROKA, when I first started as the juvenile chief here, ROKA was introduced to Lynn. And Molly, I remember Molly 15 or so years ago coming into our office, and we started to build up a relationship in this community, and we started doing some good work. Then the tragedy of September 11 came, and a lot of the resources were basically wiped out, there was no resources for us to continue, for ROKA to continue doing their work. So as a result, we think they have withdrawn. And for that, Molly has always been concerned about coming back to Lynn and doing what is right for this community. I can tell you, I could ask, you could ask any question you want, I have never in my career has seen a model, an intervention model, that has data and that has some success working with this highest population. I'm honored to be part of it, and be more than glad at the end of answering any questions if you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for one. Jake Jacobs, I always do business development, really the nuts and bolts of the program as it deals with the municipalities that we serve. So there are really two key components to ROKA as it relates to the community. One is the assignment of a youth worker to work the city of Lynn. And this is an individual that's been trained in social work by other organizations, loves working with this population, has shown success in dealing with the ups and downs of this population. And the youth worker is really the person that is working with these individuals from day one through their time at ROKA. They are their best friend, their coach, their tough love, their parent that these guys don't have, they're working with them almost every day. And the youth worker will have, over the course of this arrangement, between 20 and 25 young men that they'll be working with, and they'll be working the streets of Lynn. You'll see them, they'll wear an orange t-shirt or an orange jacket, clearly identified, and they are working closely with the police, with the court system, with the engagement institutions in the community, and they're also doing extensive outreach. They're going into the kids' homes, into the hangouts, working on the street corners, seeing where these guys are, and they start the engagement process. And they're the ones that are really turning the, really reviewing the program with that participant to engage in at ROKA. And as John said, these are people that, the participants that we're working with, they are not coming to ROKA for help. They don't want to be helped, they don't want anything to do with anybody. But we keep working with them and keep on them and keep talking about them turning their lives around. So that youth worker is wholly dedicated to 20 to 25 young men in this community. They'll be constantly in and around the community, and they will be really that person that's under responsible for those individuals to succeed in the ROKA program. So that's a youth worker. There is a cost to that person, it's $103,000, and that's everything from soup to nuts, and their training and their transportation and their work with the population in town. They are continually trained on how to deal with these people, and they're working with them nearly 24/7, they're on call 24/7, and always dealing with them. The other part of the program that's essential, as John mentioned, is the Transitional Employment Program. That's where we're working with in Chelsea and Malden and Everett and Revere, we have what are called Basic Transitional Employment Work Crews. And these are crews of between three and seven young men working with a crew supervisor on projects in the city. This past winter, we were able to work with Lynn Housing, with a crew that went out there, they were on a grant, they worked at Lynn Housing with Ms. Gata and getting, helping them on various cleanup projects, painting projects, kind of grunt labor, but a good work for our guys. And the key component to the ROKA program is that work component, because we can have all the kumbaya sessions and all the fieldwork sessions you can imagine, but this individual is not going to be successful until they are working, and they have to learn how to work and get the habits of work. So those crews can work with DPW as they do in Chelsea, as they do in Malden. It's a seven-man crew, it goes out six and a half hours four days a week, does everything from clearing brush to doing landscaping to shoveling snow to doing fall cleanup, spring cleanup, they're a real asset to the community. That crew is $165,000 for their work, and they're getting eight laborers, and you're getting them for four days a week, 52 weeks of the year, and they get a lot of work done that isn't currently being done by your town, by your cities that maintenance, DPW. So those are the two components, it's really the backbone, if you will, of ROKA. So that, Molly, a couple of words before we turn it over for questions.
Thank you, I'm here at ROKA, thank you, Dan, for having us today. I just want to make a couple of points to tie some things together, and then we'll open up with questions. First of all, for those of you who remember, we were here in 2001. I just want to be clear on what's different. When Dan came to see me about what he might think about doing in his next career, I remember talking with him about coming to Lynn, probably one of the hardest things in our career, other than losing young people with leaving Lynn. And some of you, this room are here then, so just to say two things that are very, very different. One is that we have a really deliberate model that's backed in evidence and data, performance-based management. If some of those materials, we can get you as much information as you'd like. We're probably one of a handful of organizations in the whole country using data management to drive out for young people. And the second is that we really have a funding model now, so we wouldn't even be talking to you. We have funding to start to come to Lynn, and so we're coming here with that funding, and I said, oh, that's the pay for success group, because we just talked about how that money's getting put together. And then the third is our kind of vision and hopefully how we can work with you. So briefly, to honor this pay for success initiative, you may remember that the governor created a trust fund for pay for success for two projects, chronic homelessness and helping very high-risk young men not go to prison in the future. It's a $27 million project that will put a capital stack together of philanthropy, senior debt from a Wall Street bank, and junior debt from Living Cities Foundation and the Creskey Foundation. We expect to hear on the final piece of senior debt tomorrow, which is really exciting. And you may know that today, in the business section of the Globe, the United States Department of Labor awarded the Commonwealth an additional $11.67 million to extend that project to the number of young people. So we're putting together those resources to start. We would not need a building here, the model works through outreach and demand. So we will know tomorrow about what our start date would be. We've been working with the police department, probation, and DYS, and a number of other players, the sheriff's department in the city, as well as Counselor Barton and Brandon Counsel Crichton, you know, about the model and how we would go. So we imagine the selection, we don't choose the young people, but it could get up to serving about 50 young people through the pay for success, if we give it time for the city of Lynn, which would be about appropriate looking at the numbers. And our hope over time is that we might, in partnership with you and some foundations, raise money for a non-pay for success group for her that could be either police department could literally refer, who is sort of not, who causes the most trouble in the community. And we've done a pretty good community assessment, give a great range of programs, introduce some outreach, give prevention programs. Our expertise really is behavior change in high-risk. So just to give you that information. And on that note, let's just, if you have any questions, let's open up.
Counsel Barton.
Good to you, Mr. President. You know, is other programs in the city similar, and then what do you have to offer that they go, you know?
Sure. So if you look at high-risk, there are at-risk, there's kind of a continuum of behavior. They may be getting in trouble, they may be getting a lot of trouble. There's a group of young people who can kind of participate in things. They need some outreach, they need some mentoring, and they'll start participating. You have another group of young people which really drives your crime problem, your city image problem, generally 17 to 24, that refuse to participate in programming. So we actually have a risk analysis process similar to the court system, so that if somebody really needs support and outreach and programming, we're going to let them go there, we're going to help them get there. Our strength is really sort of your most difficult, the police department literally could say, oh yeah, we can tell you who they are, you know, they just refuse to do anything. They're to engage criminal behavior, they're not engaging at all in any programming, and they were kind of repeat offenders, they would hit a high-risk assessment score for continued criminal behavior and incarceration. And so the difference is, we engage to this program with them, it's two-year intensive, two-year follow-up, it's all based on behavior change and repetitive, we are engaged in the you-know-what, that's essentially what we wrap around them, to bother them, we annoy them, we haul them literally out of bed, they cut off their leaves, we bring them back, and we work on the skills development until they kind of cook in themselves. Generally takes about 18-plus months to see any sustained behavior change. So what happens otherwise, if you can go to court, right, and they say, you're gonna, you're gonna go get a GED, you're gonna get a job, and you're gonna have a case of restitution, but the kid can't sit still, they're pretty much violating probation before they go to the office. So that's, it's just a whole different program, as opposed to engaging and doing those, which we used to do, and that's fabulous for a lot of young people.
Counsel Barton.
Mr. President, this isn't a question, it's just the other counselors, me and Counselor Crichton toward the facilities, and it's really something to see, and I highly recommend that every counselor go over here and see what it's all about, it was well worth it.
And we'd love to have you visit, we can show you our data system, and we can kind of work through some stuff, and we spoke with your chief and your deputy chief quite a bit, they've been very supportive.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counselor Ford.
I always felt as though I had a mini ROKA going on with Boxing Club. As you know, Counsel President, you were very supportive with all the guys in the Boxing Club. You talked about the behavioral changes and the life skills and the discipline and self-respect and all that stuff. And thanks to Dan and Seale, we had it going for ages, and Counsel Trahan, all the councils actually were down there at one time, and that was a great program. And we lost the building, it was owned and run on foreclosure, anyway, we lost the space. Is that something you would ever consider, like, since I've been looking to bring the kids back, the small group, and some of them now, they're in 60s to 80s in Lynn, would that be something that could possibly tie into your program? Do you have facilities where, you know, they have insurance through the Boxing Club? You know, we reach out for grants, we used to get five from the city of Lynn block grant, and 10 for G employees with data fund, so there is a support behind this one.
So we have no, we wouldn't have a facility in Lynn, you don't need that. You have youth programs in churches and centers. We've kind of redesigned, ROKA used to do a lot of different things, we're working with a range of young people at different risk levels, we're very focused on high-risk young men. We still work with some young others, but we've actually separated out of programming time. Interestingly enough, the literature in criminal justice is pretty clear, if you mix risk populations, so if you have kids who are at a lower risk in with higher risk, their criminal behavior goes up. We can tell you that's true. So we actually peeled out every other thing we do. We do some engagement activities, but mostly, so we're probably not the best partner for that kind of thing. It's a great thing, and I heard about your program, so it's nice to meet you. But it's, and we've really restructured it around full-blown behavior change, and falling out of bed, learning how to work, dragging in the programming until the lights go out.
Counsel Seale.
I saw you did some good work, you did some work, but just sorry, is there any looking for $103,000 from the city to pay for that?
So first of all, we're able to start here with no money from the city, we're going to get funded by Pay for Success. And if you just look at the statistics, we're not in charge of selecting, you know, the state's going to select them so they can really test our program, but the biggest group for the East Boston, Revere, Medford, Cambridge, Somerville, Malden area is Lynn, so the largest number, we might get up to 50 young people there. We would hope, over time, to work with you to fund a youth worker that is not attached to Pay for Success, so that we could work with your police department, and they could literally go through who's who and go find them. So for example, the city of Malden just started out a contract with us, and they pay for you for her, they send you for her, or the chief of police who said, see you later, go find, you know, here's my top 25 driving me nuts, how about that? And we're kind of working, so we hope over time we could build that as well. We find them, you know, and it's, you all know that you've got a crime problem here that's fairly significant, it impacts your development and your city, you know, we find over time, if you will, having skin in the game with cities builds a better partnership. So we hope over time we can get there. We're trying to raise some private money for a youth worker that would be freed up, because we can't select the Pay for Success group, but it'll all be in high-risk as well. So that's our model, but we don't need to start that way.
I just want to say that I agree with Counsel Barton and what I say, but there are so many groups that are already here in the city that are all looking for some formal funding, and they're always coming in front of us, coming in front of community involved and always, and, you know, it's like, how do you pick and choose? I always say, your success is, there's quite a few groups in the city that don't get the kind of grant funding that you get, that are doing some pretty good things in the city, but, you know, if we have to take money from Peter, I mean, I just, you know, I'm not saying you aren't doing a good job, I'm just, one of my concerns, the groups that are already working here, and I know Crichton's not a real job, I mean, he talks very highly about it, but...
I completely respect that, you have lots of decisions to make with funding, we're not here to make funding pitches tonight, we just wanted to tell you we'd like to go there. All I can tell you is, part of the reason we're successful at raising money is because we deliver outcomes. And the state has now done a 10-year look back at high-risk young men, and done a comparison to ROKA, and it was a competitive process. And we're in the arena we're in, highest-risk young men, we're atop the former nationally. We continue to do that, and we hope to continue to get better. And it's decisions cities have to make, and Mayor Malden's got a lot of programs, but he's got a problem with the highest-risk young men, because they're not engaging in programming. he's got a problem with the highest-risk young men, they're not engaging in programming. So it's something over time we hope to go to, we are, we are committed, we're thrilled to come back to Lynn, thrilled to work with you all, and we're excited that, you know, we get to sort of walk in the door with a pretty extraordinary opportunity of this Pay for Success, it's a longstanding funding, a full-blown evaluation, so we're pretty excited.
Just have one more quick question. Counsel.
It's great that you work with these young men, you work with their families as well, their parents, siblings, people who, you know, they're living with.
If they want to, we find, or if their families want to, we find at the seventeen-to-twenty-four year old age, so we used to work with twelve to twenty-six-year-olds, then we worked with fourteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds, and now it's seventeen-to-twenty-four. They average between nineteen and twenty-one. We find that this level of risky behavior disconnection, they're often highly disconnected from their families, where their families have so much going on. It's interesting, the state's SSY initiative upwards I've been open is part of, there was an intention to work with a lot more families, but at this risk level, it doesn't happen so easily, it's quite difficult. So our model's really focused on individual behavior change, but we'll work with anybody who wants to work with them.
Counsel Pahn.
Yes, I think it sounds like a great program, and I'd love to see it in Lynn. Just the one concern, a question that I have, I think a lot of us here have relationship with some of the groups that are doing similar work in this city right now. So what I was wondering is, you know, in Boston, and also must be other groups that do similar work, I would think, so is it a collaborative effort? I mean, how do you work with other groups? Would you work, or is it, sometimes in the nonprofit world, there's competition where I always felt like if it was more of a collaborative effort, we'd really get some better results, you know, and that, that's, that would be nice to hear, you know, that we, you know, could meet some of the other groups in the city, you maybe already have.
So we know some, we've been a little bit, we've been kind of waiting to hear, on the surface, it sounds like we do the same work. In reality, we're not, we're doing something fundamentally different than your other groups, where we've been meeting, we met with the city health department director, Mary Ann, and she came and saw the program, and we've had extensive talks with the police department. On the surface, it appears that way, when you really start getting down to the risk level, people aren't doing it. And so we're able to, we're pretty clear on our lane, we don't need to get in anybody else's lane, if we can help somebody in another lane, if we can partner, we do that really well. And it's a similar situation in Boston, we've been, we're gonna go into Boston, be honest with Boston, we've been mostly focused against Boston, and, you know, eighty-five percent of the people we talk to, once they start hearing, they're like, "Oh yeah, that's not our lane." So we think we can help people do that, you know, people do outreach on the street here, and I know you have some success with that, and that's great, if you're connecting with people with some activities and some programming, this group pretty much refuses to connect to programming, we're pretty clear on that. So I think we can be helpful in that. I, you know, does that mean that people might not like it right away? Probably, but we're pretty clear about our lane.
Thank you.
Yes, but it's an important question, and we have a lot of respect for the great work going on.
Counsel Trahan.
Thank you, I have a quick question I have to ask, you say that you have a man that you work with, that you have a minimum, bring him to the high-risk?
This model, no, we made it, we used to do a lot of things, I don't know if they were possible or any of them, we hope we were better than not. What got really clear is the work with the highest-risk young men, we wanted to move the needle on violence and on incarceration, because those are devastating horrible communities, it's a little too business efforts, all those things, so you can't do that many things if you're dedicated. We've worked very successfully, actually with high-risk young women, but they're much less likely than adults. So that this project is really high-risk young men, in Chelsea, Revere, East Boston, you know, limited work on high-risk, on mothers and high-risk young mothers, but it doesn't have the kind of data or program behind it to kind of go into any, it's failing some.
Now, are you remembering, like, the kids, like gangs, is it just every, you know, I guess my question is, like, where do you get the kids from, like, from the probation, from random ports, is that...
So, so the thing that's insane, regardless of how I get them for a minute, is they're seventeen to twenty-four, they are highly disconnected, refuse to do things, very totally, they're not gonna go to youth film, they're not gonna go to GED program, they're not gonna go up to, you know, they're not gonna regularly hang out unless they're kind of, you know, doing something, and not supposed to do what a youth center. And they match what they call a high-risk assessment score in criminal justice. The criminal justice system, the risk assessment score is about, are you likely to go back to prison and commit violence at a high level? So that's the focus. How we get them often is driven by money. So the Pay for Success project out of the state, probation and the Department of Youth Services will assign them to us, we have no choice, they're gonna randomly assign them actually, so they can really see if the program's any good or not. One of the reasons we hope to raise money for a non-Pay for Success youth worker, if you will, is so that the police department would assign, if it doesn't happen to be that way. So it just totally depends, but their profile, if you will, their behavior, their characteristics are similar. And they don't have to want to be in the program on some of the don't actually, because they're that disconnected, and we're very, very good at holding on to them, at a really high level of potential.
So now, say someone out of our, whatever the city is meeting someone personally, if we want to contact you and bring that person in, that's something that you do, or do you have to go to the board system?
You can't, you won't be able to unless we get a non-Pay for Success funded person. Right, it's completely, because the state is not only putting its money behind it, by the way, Pay for Success won't get paid for five years from the state, that's why we have to raise money upfront, because it really is pay for outcomes. So this is a pretty dramatic shift in the state and the country. So we'll get our first success payment for Pay for Success, five years down the road. So they really want to evaluate it, and so they, you can't mess with that process, that's why you wanna, you're gonna wanna... Lynn, you could probably stand for a total of three youth workers for your highest risk. You've got a lot of, they're in different risk levels, they don't need that. And so our hope is that with you all, that we can over time raise money on one of the youth, except for all.
Counsel Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, I just want to, I want to thank the folks from Philly being here tonight, you guys have a tremendous, tremendous name for the Commonwealth Massachusetts, and the communities that you serve are well-served by you, and I'd like to thank, of course, Counselor Craig and Counsel Barton for bringing this issue forward. These are the real substantive issues in the city, and these issues really we should be focusing on more often. And as many of the counselors here can tell you, we often attend a lot of high school graduations in the city of Lynn, and we graduate a lot of our young, our young men to college, to military careers, and just careers, but far too many, we are graduating to the House of Corrections and Customs Counting. And as a former prosecutor, I can tell you that, once they, and as you know, as Daniel knows, once they get in the juvenile system, they're there essentially for a very long time, if not for forever. So with that, of course, now we're seeing studies that are showing young men in our community are susceptible to war, especially younger minority men, chronic unemployment, they have tremendous health problems, through studies of them, Community Health Center, they're also actually violence, armed ourselves, and other folks, they're usually involved in domestic violence as well. So focusing on young men is very, very important, it's a good idea, and I thank you for that very much. So within these other communities that you've been in, what are some of the obstacles that you've seen when you start, and how can Lynn learn from those maybe possible obstacles or issues? And how can we help you kind of get your feet running faster than some of those communities?
Well, since the two counselors have been so helpful, and then God's seen you all as a huge start, and the other thing that's been great is both your chief and deputy chief are pretty powerful people who know it really well and have studied the model, so that's been really helpful. I think, well, hopefully, know tomorrow night when our start date might be, and we can get that to you pretty quickly, you know, we would love to meet with as many people as you think is possible, just meeting people and kind of helping understand which lane you're in, to avoid what you were talking about, Counsel, which might extremely helpful. And the more people are willing to talk about that level of problems and really get clear, you know, there really is a continuum of behavior, I mean, we're best at that kind of far out, really difficult group, the more people are willing to talk about it, the better. That's what we've done, we've talked about. And we're very, you know, we're very honest about what we can do, what we don't, what we're in trouble, we'll show right up, this isn't a group that, you know, this is a group that gets, I'll say when I was telling this with Brendan, we, in negotiating with the Commonwealth, I called up the undersecretary and I said, "Look, we have to talk about risk mitigation." And we've been working on this very complex contract, and so it's like, well, you mean triggers and remedies, it was all tied into, like, payments. I'm like, "No, we gotta talk about guns and knives." And he's like, "Oh yeah." I mean, because that's what we're really talking about. So we're very honest about what, you know, what we can do, what we can't do, we're not magic, you know, you all know better than I do about the tragedies in this community, but we think we can be of help. So we find the more people are ready to engage, the better, that's what we do.
Any other questions? Counsel Net.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to echo Counsel Cahill, this program's a good program, I know a guy who used to run the program in Chelsea, in Revere, now he teaches kickboxing in Lynn, he would like to meet him, I can connect with him. Anyway, my question is that, I don't know if I read correctly, so how much are you willing to pay them now?
How much would?
How much are you willing to pay them, pay these kids?
So the young people don't get paid to go to programming, but they do get paid to go to work. So when they're on their work route, so the data's very clear, real pay for real work, they get paid minimum wage when they're on a work route, they work twenty-six hours a week, and then they have a development day they have to do, they do not get paid for that. So let's just talk about who they are. It generally takes fifteen to eighteen months to help them learn how to put sixty days in a row of work, right? So they come for a week and they get money, and then they leave, and then they get in trouble, and then they're bored, they don't like somebody, they don't know what to do, and, you know, whatever, whatever today's thing is, right? They don't be told what to do, you know, or they're tired, there's a lot of being tired. And then they lose their job, and then we go all the way to find them, and then we drag them back in and make them go through a rehire process, and then, like they said, about five times, they go, they look through the basic transitional employment about five times, because we think you ought to put sixty days in a row before we look for, you know, a job somewhere else. And then we have an advanced transitional employment opportunity for those young people doing well, but we'd still like to be in their business, not that we need their permission, because we kind of just bug them anyway. And that pays a little bit more, and they're either single placements or group placements, and often have attempted perm-type opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, we'll send you a note, hopefully tomorrow night, we'll have a start page, and surely we'll have a paper.
Thank you.
We have no communications, no public hearings, and none to be set down, no unfinished business, committee reports, ways and means committee.
Counsel Lozey.
I defer to, unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting.
Counsel Trahan.
Yeah, that was unanimous vote of the committee.
Motion accepted. Second discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
License committee.
unanimous vote of that committee, motion accepted.
Motion accepted. Do I hear second? Second discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Public property committee, we have three items, two of them have asked for an emergency, and I can read them together if you want to separate them at a time. Order that the city of Lynn hereby transfers the property at Twenty-Nine Power Street to the Lynn Housing and Neighborhood Development. Further orders that the city solicitor's office prepare the necessary deed for such conveyance, and further order that a rather the mayor's hereby authorized to execute said deed. And the second order is ordered that the city-owned property at the corner of Liberty Street and Buffroom Street be placed out to bid to a butters only for parking and/or landscaping only.
Voter, motion approved.
Motion made, seconded to approve, discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Flucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes.
And on the emergency, roll call, please.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Flucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes. Finance committee, we have several orders, and we've published, they've requested an emergency on all of them, I'll read them together, and you can separate them if you'd like. Order that the city comptroller beings hereby authorized to take the following action. Certify as an available fund the amount of four hundred eight thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for seven six seven zero zero nine forgery redesign grant period nine one thirteen to eight thirteen fourteen. Certify as an available fund the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars and zero cents as allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Perkins four hundred grant grant period nine one thirteen to eight thirty-one fourteen. Certify as an available fund the amount of seven thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and zero cents is allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Title II A carryover additional funds, grant period nine one thirteen to nine thirty thirteen. Certify as an available fund the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty cents as allotted to the city of Lynn School Department by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Harrington redesign grant grant period nine one thirteen to eight thirty-one fourteen. Transfer the sum of twenty-three thousand forty-four dollars and fifteen cents from the ISD, expense ISD unpaid bills of prior years, and transfer the sum of thirteen thousand eighteen dollars and zero cents from reserve account to various accounts to fund collective bargaining agreement.
Motion, motion to approve.
The unanimous vote of the finance committee, if there's no objection, we'll take them collectively, together. Motion made, right here, second. Second discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Flucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes. The emergency's Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Flucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Craig?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seale?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven yes. New business.
New business, Counsel Seale.
I think all the counselors received a letter in that package over the weekend, and to be perfectly honest with you, I find it quite disturbing after reading it. I also know that we asked certain individuals to appear here tonight in front of the council to explain their actions for last Tuesday night in the city council office. Can be debated what happened, I personally feel is a criminal act took place, that's my opinion. I wish that individual had appeared here tonight to answer these questions, I don't know if they acted alone, or on behalf of somebody, but I find it really disturbing that somebody would open a locked door and go into an unoccupied office and take materials out of that office, be in the computer, not letting anybody know that they had done that. I just find it really extremely disturbing that they didn't call and tell anybody that they were doing that after they took it, they didn't tell anybody. I feel it was a violation on a certain individual in that office, as well as all eleven counselors. I feel as though the person, that this was, I don't know what the word would be, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a street guy, but I think that crime was definitely committed. And seeing that that person is not here, I know that the council has the right to subpoena this person, and I'm gonna make a motion that we subpoena ten weeks, who's an employee of the mayor, not the city of Lynn, but of the mayor, to appear in front of the next council meeting and answer any questions that we may have during acts that took place on primary.
Thank you, the motion on the floor is there, second. Second discussion. Counsel Barton.
Mr. President, for the attorney, which one of the attorneys brought here? Was your prime committee?
I understand that there's an investigation ongoing, I have no knowledge of whether a primary committee is this time, I'm not, it's a matter of being referred or an investigation.
Okay. If we had, if we had that person come to the council, wouldn't they be, wouldn't they be prepared themselves?
Section three six of the city charter allows that city councils conduct an investigation in any city affairs in conjunction with an ability to investigate, you have the ability to subpoena witnesses, ask for documents to be produced. As far as what questions that you ask, and what question he is, if he or she, whether the council wishes to subpoena, I'm assuming that we tell him, and he answered your question, so you, this council can conduct its own investigations, seems to be what should happen.
Counsel Trahan.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the chair, to Attorney Lamont, now, is there anybody in the city that has the right to do that? They, they, I mean, tell somebody to come in and do that, without, no financial, come behind a locked door.
Attorney Bruton, that'll be part of this investigation as to which offices and which individuals have that right, and I believe, my understanding, that investigation will commence this week.
Counsel Craig. Mr. President, through your two members, Attorney Lamont, can you just go over the subpoena process again? I mean, it's not something that I normally associate with the rules of the city council. In terms of, so we would vote on this tonight, on Counsel Seale's motion, does it have the same powers as the subpoena that would come from, say, the judicial system or the law court? I'm Attorney Eunice Lee, because I don't know the process for it. Could you use your voice a little bit?
Say, it's a seldom-used process, certainly my sixteen years, and I don't recall for the city councils, and use the subpoena power from three six parentheses A and parentheses of the, of the city charter. It would be appropriate, given that the legal nature of a subpoena, that the, what is a law department to pay that, that would be served by our authority. An individual would, would be required personally to the city charter to appear to answer, answer questions.
What would happen if the individual often not appear? If that was standing?
The council wouldn't, would have the ability to seek the judicial order, so the size, which required the attendant to so we could subpoena, who would, if they thought about, about that earlier, would apply on section three six A of the city charter to enforce this subpoena power, you would have been provided.
In terms of, it's a regular problem, counsel. We don't have any authorities, really, linking assets at any force for informational purposes or arguments off.
The council has the power, the power to investigate into the allegations that the council here is concerned about. Any additional powers? Section three six is clear, is this the power to investigate?
Thank you.
Here's your question.
Counsel Ford.
I wasn't really aware of this, until I seen in my package, I had my package till late in the weekend, and is it processed? Does it ever happen like for the mayor to have someone look into someone's computer? I mean, does that go on? Is this the guy's job? Or, I'm just not sure. Is, is that protocol to like, has he ever taken anyone else's computer?
Again, these are all allegations to be investigated at this time.
Counsel Capano.
Hypothetically speaking, if someone were to come into the city council office and it was locked, just speaking hypothetically, and take someone's computer without them knowing, without telling them ahead of time, without any advanced warning, hypothetically, is, is that proper protocol? Or would that be legal? Or, you know, if that happens?
Going to kind of apply my idea, but I'm not comfortable answering hypothetical questions while there's an investigation going on. There is also rules as far as executive section, which discussing anyone's character, whether they've committed a crime, again, this is the allegations that are presented and that are being investigated at this time. That will be part of my imagination, I imagine it'll be part of the review, it's part of the motions if there's any wrongdoing or of any kind by any individual.
Counsel Kehoe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Lamont, as counsel to the city council, there's.
The mayor of every department of the city.
There's an ongoing investigation. There's a committee that's informed with personnel to our district judge, Dr. Colick, Attorney David Rumel. Is it your opinion, what is your opinion to this board as to whether we should take action parallel to the action taken to the, to the current investigation? Should we wait for some findings? What are the pitfalls going forward?
I defer to you, that the council has the ability to conduct its own investigation, whether they believe it is warranted, or whether they'd rather wait until the investigation appears to be underway, is completed, before they have to take their own investigation. I defer to you as the duly-elected city council.
Is there any liability issues as far as defamation is concerned, possibly?
Not at all.
Counsel Trehan.
Thank you, Counsel President. Now, to the chair, to our administrative aide, Terry Young, did you get a phone call that day or anything in writing that, that you knew anybody was coming to take your computer?
I believe at this, at this point, it would be tempting to cease asking questions in the investigation, but the rule is to, the decision is to subpoena any witness, that it would be appropriate to do that at that time. At this point, again, it's a distress, there have been allegations made of a certain factual scenario, and it's being investigated, when the council wishes to conduct its own investigation, a future meeting is entirely up to the, as your counsel.
Counsel Seah.
Attorney Lamont, I know that the council is right to ask me a lot to come in front of the council and answer any questions that we may have. They're obligated to do that. I believe the mayor is also obligated to come, is supposed to be advanced notice. I have a question. My question is that we've asked Mr. Weeks to come in here tonight to answer some questions, obviously, like, not being here, confused himself. And the way I understand it, part of the process is the subpoena. My question is that if we subpoena and he does not come, can we ask the mayor to cease payments to Mr. Weeks until he does appear in front of the council because he is being paid, I believe, from some type of settlement, which is a city plan?
Getting ahead of ourselves, we have a vote that hasn't been, voted on, whether to issue the subpoena, whether it, I would assume that he would audit the subpoena, it's clear. Department heads and city employees are required to appear at, first, a simple request by the city council, my understanding is that Weeks is an independent contractor, not a city employee, so a request would not obligate him to appear here, my understanding is also the request was issued somewhat late today, but I have a reason to believe that the independent contractor employed, that would receive the subpoena from the city, would, would audit the subpoena or appear, as far as, the council is free to make any recommendations it wishes to the mayor, with respect to any aspect of the investigation, to the extent that investigation does, does help, it would be a recommendation.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Ford.
I think towards that, Mr. Weeks, could maybe he does this for the mayor and other department's offices? Let's find out.
Counsel Kehoe.
Mr. President, clearly, the allegations are concerning, and I don't think anyone who read the letter would, would think otherwise. I would just point out that there is a current investigation going on. I think the process should unfold first before we take any action. And also, this is an unprecedented step we're taking here to try to issue a subpoena to somebody. Clearly, this, it's upsetting, it's concerning, but I don't know of a subpoena at this point, we just received this information on Friday, we haven't written a formal request for him to come before, anybody to come before the committee to discuss this matter. I would suggest that we provide a formal request, and should somebody refuse to attend that, then it gives cause to the issuance of a subpoena, which is a significant step for us. Not to say that it doesn't merit that type of action, I think it should, however, it is a, it's a sensitive issue, it's a sensitive time of year, and I just want the right thing to happen for the right reasons. And I just caution for this council to take this type of step at this point, maybe a little rash, and we can meet, obviously, next week and the week after that, but there's no, we can meet more than one, so I would just, I don't think I could support a subpoena today, but I could support a subpoena next two days, should no one come before us, if that, the wish of the council, I'd be.
Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, through you two members, I guess I'm a bit torn, there's two, obviously, I think we all want information. I do agree with some of Counsel Kehoe's concern, in terms of the timing of it. I don't know that much would be lost in terms of, you know, coming towards justice by waiting a little bit. At the same point, I do understand that everybody here, you know, desires that information
Any other comments or questions? Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
No.
No. Counsel Kehoe.
No. Mr. President, why should I get it?
To, I believe the motion was to subpoena Mr. Weeks to attend the next council meeting.
Counsel Kehoe.
No.
No. Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
No.
No, Counsel Seah.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ford.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.[1742.24]